Welcome folks, my name is Ian Cohen. This is another insight conversation as part of the first ever ATL Education Expo. The purpose of these conversations are for us to help shed light on different career paths educators can take and also dig into the work of our guests. So today I'm talking with Sharice Davis, who is a school board member in Cobb County. Hey Sharice, how are you this morning?
I'm great. Thank you so much for having me today.
Yeah, I'm really excited to dig into what a school board member actually does. Some people might be convinced that you guys don't do a lot, but I know that's not true. You do a lot of work. And I also want to peel back the curtain over what was the path actually run and become a school board member? Like, what does that look like? Politics is this sort of like weird mystical area that nobody knows how to get into, but then when you're in it, you're in it, you know? So we'll dig into that, but first and foremost, I would love Sharice for you to take a moment and just explain to us your connection to Atlanta education. And you know, a little bit about your professional background, how you ended up on the school board?
Alright, so yes, I am a Spelman College grad, so that's what brought me to the Atlanta area. And I, my junior year, we had a guest speaker in one of my classes and she actually was a Teach For America core member. And she was talking about her experience as a teacher and I was on track to do something completely different. But I heard from this young woman and she just made me feel like, oh my goodness, like she sounds like a superhero. Like, I wanna, I wanna be a teacher. And so I actually got involved with Teach For America, working for them. My senior year, helping to recruit other Spelman students to apply. And so of course myself, I applied and that's how I got into teaching. I started teaching in Atlanta Public Schools at Hutchinson Elementary. And I, you know, one grade I did not want to teach and that was kindergarten, but literally two days before school started, the principal came to me and I was supposed to be team teaching in a second grade class. And he said, "We have a teacher that's not coming back and so I need you to teach kindergarten," of course. And so I actually, I was a kindergarten teacher for eight years. So clearly I loved it, but I stayed at my, my host school, my home school for five years and then went to Morris Brandon and APS and Fulton County. And so I was a teacher and media specialist. I got into the media side of things for 15 years. And most recently worked in the public library system. But you know, what happened in there was that someone said, "Hey, have you ever thought about running for office?" And so kind of here we are, but of course, you know, a few steps in between that.
Yeah, well, we'll dig into that for sure. I want to go back to the beginning for a second. Like you, I also was not planning on teaching and then got, got inspired to do so. And I also, I was originally supposed to teach math, which was my biggest fear. So I quietly took the certification test for US history and world history and then I got hired for that, thank God. So you know, you spent a long time in the classroom and you know, became a veteran educator. Tell me about the media specialist stuff that you added in. I know we don't have libraries anymore. We have media centers. But how did that develop and then turn into ultimately a role that you pursued, it sounds like, in the system?
Well, it's funny because I always said I'm kind of old school. Like, I liked the term "school librarian", even as we were, you know, more forget to media specialists and even in one district I was in, it was media and educational technology instructors or something like that. It was a mouthful. Yeah, but I went to Georgia State to get my certification in early childhood. And at that time, it was like, it made sense to go ahead and get a master's degree. And I was going to get it in early childhood education, but I had a couple of hiccups, I think, just literally if something happened with paying for it. And it made me just take a moment to just say, you know, maybe I get it in something else, my masters. And so I explored some programs and I thought, and one of my reading classes, actually Georgia State reminded me of just how much the public library system played a role in my upbringing. It's the first time I ever used a computer, you know, my dad used to take me and my sisters and keep us busy, you know? We would go to the library and we loved it. And so I looked at some programs for library and information science, which would give me the flexibility of both being a media specialist in the schools, but also if I wanted to, to become a public librarian or any other kind of librarian. So that was really good, again, to have that flexibility. So got my degree and my first job as a media specialist was actually in a charter school in APS. And then went on from there and it really was like the best of both worlds because I still got to teach, but I was also able to provide a lot of support for teachers.
I want to ask you about this. I, you know, we all have like, when we're feeling most flustered, we pretend, like, we think about, what's the profession where I could just go off and be by myself and really enjoy it and not talk to anybody ever again? For me, like, that's part of why I've always wanted to go and be a librarian somewhere. Can you just tell me for a second what your, what the degree in library, I forget the exact term you said, but like, what does that incorporate? What does that include? Because I, you know, I'm sure we're not the only ones who, who have those imaginations of becoming in that system a librarian.
Yeah, so a master's of library and information science encompasses a lot of things. Obviously, you know, technology is such a huge part of what we do now. Any of us that are old enough to remember the card catalog, people will laugh, like, you still have that? Yeah, we do, but of course it's, you know, and not in all places. I think there's still places that might have, have drawers. But you know, it's all tech-based now, right? But it's still the same idea. You're also learning things like cataloging, you know, how do books get catalogs? I mean, it's, it really is a science. And of course, you're learning how to, you know, just the customer service aspect really of being a librarian. And of course, you know, as a media specialist, as a school librarian, you are very much still a teacher. And so there's coursework on that. And I actually had a kind of a focus in media considering that I wanted to stay in the schools. And so there's a lot of options there, but one thing people don't know, it's, you know, if you work at, you're a librarian at like, let's say, a law office, a practice, like, you probably have a law degree in addition to your library science degree. So librarians are people who, I mean, talk about loving school and being like the most educated of folks, like, you know? It's not just, you probably have degrees in what you are in the field that you're in. And everybody, a lot of people have libraries. I think the Grammys, for example, you know, they, they hire librarians. Yeah, it's pretty cool. Once you figure out all the different spaces.
Librarians are the original search engines, you know, they're masters of information. I lived next door to a librarian here in Atlanta for a couple of years and he was extremely well-versed and always interesting. Okay, so, so you were teaching in the classroom and then you got this degree. It sounds like you slowly turned into the media specialist of sorts at your school. And then you made a transition into the public library system, you said. So what was that like? What led to that job?
You know, after 15 years of education, it's a funny place to be. I wasn't expecting it because you just think, oh, just everything gets so much easier. The more you've been a teacher in education. And no, it's different, right? So you have 15 years and you know, you know so much more, of course, than you did when you were a brand new teacher. And so you're also kind of looking around and if things become harder to accept and you, when you are a teacher or you work in the building, you know, you, you may or may not have a voice to, to change that you think should in your. So like, you know, I'm, I'm always going to be a teacher. Of course, I'm still a certified teacher and I, I want to be back in the classroom. You know, some people are like, "Do you really mean to say that?" But I do. I like, I really want to be back in the classroom, knowing everything that I know now, you know? Not being some 20-year-old, like, I, I think I'm going to do that. But yeah, I, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought because I was talking.
The library system.
Yeah, so I just thought, okay, after 15 years, you know, let me, let me use this library degree and I being in the public library system, which was actually amazing because I was a children's librarian, a youth services librarian. So working with kids all the way up through teenagers, which of course is a lot of fun. And you know, it was just me in the library. A lot of people may think that the library staff, it is just all librarians, but it's not. Most of the library staff are, they are staff, but they're not librarians. You probably only have a few librarians in any of the public libraries. And so I was in charge with everything children, which of course is really like the bread and butter of, of, of public library work is what you're offering kids. So it was amazing. I worked with babies on up and very much still using my teacher hat and the things that I knew about the schools to help parents who didn't know with what their student reading level meant, you know, their kids' reading levels and what they should be reading. I mean, that was, you know, that's a very like important and good job. And, and helping people to understand, like, like, you don't need to just go on Google, like, you know, like here is a wealth of information. People would laugh because they would say like, "Oh, there's still encyclopedias?" Yeah, you know, I mean, they're, they're online now, right? And so, you know, there's easy access, but that still has a place. Because we certainly understand that there's a whole lot of information out there and it's not always true and accurate. So.
Obviously, relevant today, for sure. I, I went, whenever I go back home to Philadelphia, honestly, they've redid all of the public libraries in my neighborhood. And so they're beautiful. They're amazing. And I'm a book fiend, so if I didn't have my background on right now, you'd see my, my personal library. But yeah, I mean, I think libraries are so adjacent to the school, right? And they, they're probably one of the more underutilized public resources at this point, especially for parents. But it's amazing that you had that experience. So I want to get to the point in your path where the school board became an idea. How did that happen? And then, and then we'll go from there.
So there's a group, Leadership for Educational Equity, that their purpose is to help support Teach For America alumni who are interested in political office. There's so many barriers to even thinking that this is something like for you to even consider. And so, you know, I think the first question or the first statement was like, "Hey, your school board member is coming up for reelection." And I remember thinking, "Oh, that's nice," you know? I mean, and I knew who the person was. I had watched meetings. I had spoken at Public Comment before as a parent in the district. And you know, then the question, you know, then, then it became, you know, "Have you thought about running?" Like, you know, we, and it's for all positions, not just school board. You know, people are running for mayor and their state house and all kinds of positions. And I thought, okay, well, okay, let's talk about this. And I actually had somebody come and, you know, sit at my dining room table with me and my husband and talk to me about it. And, and I wasn't sold right away still. I had gone down the rabbit hole of watching campaign debates or forums with my predecessor and thinking like, "Am I supposed to do that?" You know? And one thing, I think all teachers will appreciate this, especially when you have younger kids. But you know, we, we could do cartwheels in front of like five-year-olds, but if you ever ask us to like talk to the parents, you know, in an open house setting or something like that, it was always like, it's so nerve-wracking because, you know, kid, we could do everything, like sitting in front of kids. But um, and of course, as a politician and as somebody that's running for office, like, yeah, you're going to be sitting with a bunch of adults who are looking at you sometimes kind of crazy. You know, and debating, you know, with, with people who really just don't want you there. So, so very quickly, I actually wrote this whole like email out saying, "Hey, I know I said I would do this, but I don't really think I, I'm cut out for it, whatever." But I didn't send it. And then that same night, again, I'm down the rabbit hole. I saw a blog post from this woman that ran, I believe she was in Iowa. She ran for a state seat in Iowa. And she actually didn't win, but she ended her post by saying, like, "If you are a woman and you are considering running for office, like, you have to do it." And I was like, "Is she talking to me?" Like, and I never sent that email and here I am.
You still have the email?
Probably not. I, you know, it was in my drafts and I don't think I do, but it was like, I say it's like a dear boyfriend letter that you just never send, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's funny how, you know, the dots connect like that. And I want to touch on the, the being a female running for office part. I did a policy fellowship many years ago and it was majority women in the fellowship. But we ended up having an entire set of programs around how can we help women get into politics war? And there was some study, it takes like, I think it's like, you take, you gotta ask a guy to run twice before they're convinced they should do it. And if a woman, it's like seven times or something crazy. So I'm curious, like, can you give us a synopsis of what this person who sat with you and your husband, what was their pitch? Like, it's like, do they tell you how it worked? You know, why you should do this?
So this was Michael Vargas. He actually is a school board member out in Texas. And I realize now, like, there's so many just nuances to this conversation, whether or not you understand the local politics at play and, you know, just the environment of where we're in. And so from his standing, you know, he just, he was very much about how for him and sharing his story, which of course, like makes all the difference. If this was somebody who had done it, but how representation is so important. And even him as I think even a younger school board member and how the conversations, how he was able to contribute to conversations that maybe weren't have, have, having or happening, excuse me, before he got there. And, and I really, I mean, that, that stuck with me because that's actually one of the first things I did when we started talking about all of this, was go on and just look at the board, like, get a good picture of who the board was. At the time, there was one woman. We later found out she wasn't going to be running again. And so if I had not won my seat, then there would have been no women on our board. We know that women are 80% of the educational workforce. We know that if you pop into any PTA meeting, you know, it's often, it's not all the time. It's, of course, there are men actively involved, but it is, it is moms most of the time. And, you know, the idea that we would have all anything just didn't sit right. So this is very much like, it's a loss of service and almost feeling like a duty to, to do it if you can.
Right, that makes sense.
Our board was very different.
Yeah, and you know, that, that stuff really matters too. I mean, as folks who have worked in education for so long, you realize that like, if you don't have a perspective, that like, a lot of things won't ever even come up in conversation. Not necessarily because the people don't mean to not, you know, incorporate them or think about them, but they just don't have the perspective. And perspective, especially when you come to, you know, our politicians and elected leaders who are meant to represent us, they don't have the perspective at the table. How could they possibly serve everybody? So, okay, so you, it sounds like you had the inspiration to run now. What is, what does it mean to run? Like, what do you actually, what are some of the nuts and bolts that you have to actually do to make this happen?
So first thing I would say, you have to get the buy-in from the people that are going to be impacted by it the most. And if, you know, it's your family, you know, for me, it was my spouse, my kids. That me being out and campaigning meant a lot of nights, you know, coming home like after 10 o'clock. And, you know, my husband definitely had to pick up some things, you know, because I was out campaigning and, you know, he went out with me.
Like happy hours or PTA meetings or school meetings?
So basically, whatever you were invited to, like, you turned down nothing, right? And you know, there were things that, you know, events that I was invited to and I was just like, "I don't know." And I even knew that this really wasn't like, you know, my crowd, like, you know? But the reality is you just never know what's going to matter or who knows who or how any of those events could, you know, make all the difference. So you go, go, go. But there were forums. There's a lot of organizations that have popped up, I'm saying popped up. They're doing a lot of, lot of work, but they, they were created post-2016 in response to everything going on and wanting to find a constructive way to, to make a difference, right? And so there are a lot of activist groups and they want to hear from you. And yeah, and so you always say yes and, you know.
Start knocking, yeah. What about the, what about the financial side of it? So like, you know, obviously when people think politics and campaigns, they think about fundraising. At the national level, we know the amount of money is spent and raised is absurd. But at the local level, you know, I personally have a little bit of background in policy. So I know the local level is a very different level of money. But with that in mind, I'm curious, like, what did you have to do from a financial perspective? How much money does it take to even be competitive in a school board race?
So school board races, just smaller races in general, don't, it's never been needed to raise the kind of money that you might hear about at, of course, even countywide or statewide and then of course online. But you know, it's all a matter of how, you know, how competitive the race is. And honestly, like, we had never seen the kind of spending that we have seen in the last couple of years in Cobb County school board races. So the, the most I've ever heard of was like 30,000 being raised. I raised about 17,000. And that allowed me to do Facebook ads, a couple of rounds of targeted mailers to a certain number of voters. And so it's just a matter of, you know, what you need to do. But yes, campaigns cost money and I think that's really hard for, especially us as educators, to now be the kind of people that are like, you know, "Hey, can you donate this?" And you know, and for me, so much of my network, they are teachers. And so for them to donate $50 was like a huge deal. And so you have to factor all that in, but you know, $50, $10 from this person, like, it all adds up and you can really do a lot with that money. But you know.
Did you have like a campaign manager or was this just all like family operation? Like, how does that work? Is it, I'm assuming it's a lot of volunteers who want to see you succeed?
So you probably will not get the volunteers that you, you know, you'd like to have. Because volunteers are going to gravitate towards those, those larger races and, and so, you know, I, we could talk about that in a second. But I, yes, I definitely, I had my, no campaign manager. I didn't. I had, you know, I was coached by Lee. I had my husband's support to go out with me. I'm sorry. A lot of noise, sorry. And his support to go out and knock on doors and so, you know? But what happened was I ran when there was a governor's race. So we're on different cycles. So there's either a governor's race or a presidential race. And so Stacey Abrams, who was running at the time for governor, her thing was like, I, I'm not going to just be, I don't want to be elected governor and then everybody else, you know, down ballot, that's the term, has lost. And so she really did offer up support. There was a coordinated campaign to help people all the way down the ballot, to get volunteers and to get their name out there. And that, I mean, that helped tremendously. I would have volunteers that were going out for her, ask me for a thousand pieces of my campaign literature so that they could lead them on boards. I mean, it, you know, it was tremendous and it really did make all the difference. Because you're not probably going to bring out that level of, of volunteer force. But we don't, we don't do that alone anymore. I mean, it's, you know, it's making sure that everybody gets elected and how important it is that the people further down the ballot, because those are the people that have more of an impact on your day-to-day, how important it is for them to get elected as well. So I think that message is getting out.
Gotcha. That makes a lot of sense. And I'm glad that you were able to get that support. I have like a, you know, kazillion questions that we could ask, but I know we don't have all the time in the world. So I want to focus on, on two more things. So one is the actual day of the election. How many votes, I'm sure you know exactly how many votes you got. What was that like, just like waiting to hear? And how many did you end up getting and needing to win?
So that's a funny story because one thing is that, so you have a win number that you calculate when you're running for office. And your win number is going to be based on like previous races. However, in our district, a lot of times people were running unopposed. And so it really was hard to, to calculate that win number. In addition, the kind of, the numbers of people we were seeing coming out to vote were like nothing we had ever seen before. And so we had a number in mind, but come election day, we actually were at a election party with other people that we knew were running for state house and state senate. And we all went home from the party with no results yet and thinking that things were not looking good for most of us. And I remember, you know, my husband looking at me and just like, "I don't know, you know, this is not looking good." And what happened was that they had counted all of the in-person votes first and I lost them. You know, my, my, my opponent won the in-person votes. But one thing that also came out of that governor's race was this huge increase in people voting by absentee. It's actually how I voted. Georgia's trying to change that now, but yes, so I, you know, the absentee vote came in. It was 1:00 AM when we found out that I actually had won, I think by 1,200 votes. And ultimately, 22,000 people plus voted for me because, you know, we have large districts and yeah, it was, it was incredible. And so I got a call from a local media outlet at 1:00 AM saying, "How does it feel?" And I tried to go to sleep, which was funny to think about now because that wasn't happening.
What, wait, so how did you, so they were the ones who told you one? There wasn't like some official? Like, we all assume there's some sort of official somewhere who calls you up. It's like, alright, you are, you know, determined the winner.
So my husband, yeah, so there is a site and my husband was sitting at the computer that we have out here and like refreshing every like second, like refreshing. And so again, I was trying to rest. I'm like, because I had learned my lesson from previous elections. Let me just try to go to sleep and wake up to whatever the news is going to be. But you know, he was so animated, like refreshing and like seeing the numbers in real time shift, especially shift our way as the absentee votes came in, that it was really hard to do. And so he certainly knew, but you know, there's something really formal and official about it when, when the, the paper is calling and saying, "Hey, you know, you won." And then I heard from my coach as well with, with Lee and, you know, they were out, out west and they were like, you know, "You did it," you know? And it's, it's, it was a great night.
Yeah, I mean, and 22,000 votes is not a small amount, you know? I have a, I met a gentleman who ran for city council in, I think it's District 3 here. And the winner got like 372 votes or something. And so I think that's what people don't realize is at these local levels, that's a pretty significant amount. But even sometimes when you get to city councils or other things, who knows? I mean, it may be a small amount you need to get.
I remember looking this up once just because I was curious, but you know, Pete Buttigieg, mayor of South Bend, like, I don't remember exactly his number, but I mean, we, we are, we get more votes on our school board than he even did to be mayor of, of South Bend, you know?
That sounds like a. Yeah, that's a good talking point.
And he ran for president. And this is what I was going to tell you, Ian, because you were like the whole, you know, how many times it takes. I, I think to that point, women, you know, we will, we talk ourselves out of so much, right? And, and it's like, "Oh, I've got, I've got family. I've got this. I've got that. That's not really for me." Whereas I think, you know, a lot of times men are like, "Sure, why not?" You know? And, and I see it, you know, even with our senators that have just been elected. I mean, this is their first office, political office and it's senate, you know, the US senate. And, you know, I think, and it, there's no judgment because there is so many, there are many hurdles to clear before you decide to run for political office. I just think that that's just, that's something that definitely happens. Whereas women, we, you know, we, we talk ourselves out of it a lot of times. I almost did that, right? I'm, I'm an example of that.
Right. So, so the last thing I want to talk about is just, what does it mean, what is it like to be a school board member? So if you could tell me, what's the typical week look like or even day? If it's, you know, what, what are the things you find yourself doing as a school board member?
So one thing I want people to know, we have three very big jobs, but like, that's it. School boards are supposed to be very, you know, high level. We only have one employee and that is the superintendent. And then everybody else is the employee of the superintendent, ultimately reports to the superintendent. So those three jobs are, one, to approve a budget in Cobb County. And a lot of Atlanta metro schools, I mean, our budgets are over a billion dollars. The vast majority of that, of course, being personnel, so salary, pension, healthcare costs. We also establish policy and create policy and then evaluate the superintendent. Like, that is really it. And so a lot of times what my job has been is connecting people with information that they need. Because you are ultimately the public-facing person. People know they elected you, your cellphone and your email or on the website. And they don't, they oftentimes don't know who they are supposed to talk to, contact. And so I find myself connecting people a lot, a lot, which I do love that because I think, you know, that's empowering for people. And we have, we have meetings. We really, we only meet once a month. But there are a lot of like events and, and interviews and I talk to kids, which is really the highlight of, of the job. And things, of course, look very different now during the pandemic, but yeah, it's, you know, every day's different. A lot of emails, of course, some phone calls. And of course, people, you know, they have a lot to say, especially now with the pandemic and yeah.
Right. Well, you're both their leader and their target, right? It's like now you are the. Right. Well, you're both their leader and their target, right? It's like, now you are the, you know, where we send all of our both praise and uh, anger, I suppose. Um, okay, last thing I want to say, you're two years into your four-year term, it sounded like, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, so has it, has it lived up to what you hoped it would be, this experience? Um, maybe it was anything jumped out of you? And then what do you hope, now you've had two years, what's the next two years look like? What are your priorities over the next two years?
Yeah, so, you know, I, I often like do some check-ins with myself about, about what's happened the last two years. And I do feel like I, I'm glad I'm here. Like, I, I'm glad I'm here. Um, there have been a lot of challenges, you know, and we are a board that has, um, just very different people coming together for really the first time. I'm only the second um, black woman on the Cobb County School Board ever. Um, we certainly have challenges that I, that I think any, any school district has. Um, so there's, there's been some aspects that I weren't, I was not expecting. I mean, some of the, I get some kind of nasty emails. And, you know, I'm just like, I always go to this place where I'm like, I'm a kindergarten teacher, like, you know, I want to help kids, you know, and um, you know, to your point, like, no, like, they're, you know, you are a board member and so all they know is that they're mad and that they're gonna direct that towards you. Um, I've spent the last two years just trying to learn, learn policy and how we're supposed to, you know, talk about the issues that our county is facing and, um, you know, and, and that's not always uh, met, well, the welcoming, you know, position. And so the next two years, I think it's about using my voice, particularly when, um, you know, our staff doesn't feel like they have a voice. And I get that, you know, as a former teacher, like, we never feel like, you know, we are, we are believed and allowed to speak out about things, right? And so using my voice because teachers can't, and even in some cases, parents don't feel like they can. Um, finding ways to do that. And so, um, you know, I'm, I'm here, I feel like I have a job to do. People sent me here to do the job. They sent me here because I am uh, different than what, you know, the kind of people, board members that have been here before. And so I, I feel empowered by that. And um, you know, I'm here to do the work and we have to have tough conversations because even in a school district that's, you know, doing well and, and has all of these great things happening, we of course have kids that, um, you know, there's, the school is, is not meeting their needs for, for many different reasons. And so, um, and those are just issues in education that any of us as educators and professionals should be able to have, so.
Yeah, definitely. And, you know, things like the coronavirus and um, all the protests and elections, those things come up too. And that's where we look to you as our leader to help us through those. So, um, thank you so much again, Sharice, for giving us your time. And also, uh, you know, a takeaway is definitely if anybody watched this and has thought about school board ever, is to think deeply about it, consider running. Um, it's something any of us can do if you care about education. And uh, hopefully, over the next years, you can continue to serve as an inspiration for folks to do that as well. So, um, thanks again, and uh, we're excited to share this with the rest of the folks who join us at the ATL Education Expo.